...order, we came out of a brief executive session. We'll go to announcements. Brian, do you have some announcements?
Um, yeah, actually, I assume you're going to talk about Springs Fest and...
Fireworks and...
Yeah, and fireworks, are you going to talk about all that? Okay. So, I did want to mention that Jack Klein is having a Yellow Springs Bike Tour on...
Not Jack Klein. It's, um...
No, I think it's Jack Klein.
The Arctic.
Yeah.
It's at his properties.
Yeah, Y S Bike Tour on July 8th. And also, there's another meeting that Yellow Springs Schools are having related to infrastructure improvements on July 11th. I don't know what you talk about.
So, tomorrow is Independence Day, the 4th of July, so we have our parade at 3:00 through downtown. If anybody, and I think we all know by now that anybody and everybody is welcome in the parade, but you need to get down to Friends Care Center at 2:00 to stage for the parade. And the fireworks will be... People always ask when the fireworks start. Well, it's when it's dark. But the community band will be playing starting at 8:00. So, it will be a nice evening at Gont Park. And then, as Brian said, on Sun... or, excuse me, Saturday, July 8th, we have Springs Fest. It's going to be out in the Yard of the Bryant Center. It is bands starting at noon and ending at 10:00. There will be a beer garden and it's... Music is curated by a local gentleman, Connor Stratton. And it is a paid event, so it's a little unusual for Yellow Springs, but it is a paid event. So, but we invite you to come. Some great, great music. Anything else? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, all that we have are the minutes of June 19th of 2017 regular meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
You can move.
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Reviewing the agenda, there was one item if you... Within the petitions and communications, there is information about a berm waiver for home inc. I would like to add that to new business. And we do want to... We do want to keep as closely as we can with our timeframes within the agenda. Anything else? And Judith, I know you like moving the staff reports up, but it seems like a lot of our legislation is actually staff-generated, so maybe we cannot do that. We can leave it at the regular time now. So, Brian, if you want to review petitions and communications, please?
Okay, yes. And we had quite a few. So, there was a letter that was submitted for our packet, but also in the newspaper from Lori Asquith, talking, I guess, in summary, that it's appropriate to expect visitors to contribute to the village costs that relate to their stays. We also associated with that, I assume from Patty, there was an addendum about some details related to village, I guess, support with infrastructure for the hotel and economic development. That was somewhere around $200,000. We're going to talk about the berm, so I'll skip those. Dorothy Bouquet mentioned that implementing the lodging tax is important for affordability. We also had a memo from Chris Conard, our village solicitor, confirming what we talked about the last meeting related to the village's ability to implement in lodging tax. Ruth and Tony Bent provided a letter that talked about the need to evaluate increasing revenue by rethinking income tax. And Judy...
The Black History.
What's that?
The Black History.
Yes, yes. Yeah, actually, that was the next one. We got both a... Some general information about the Black History Tours that are being supported by the 365 Project. And also Judith highlighted a letter that we got from Chief Carlson about officers being involved in that. So, there are six various tours that are throughout the summer and fall. They all start at the Mills Park Hotel. NAMI submitted something, well, a notice about their July 20th, Thursday meeting. They have a speaker from the Clark County Combined Health District. On our table, Bruce Bratton Miller said he doesn't have a strong opinion about lodging tax, but if we do do it, then it should apply to all lodging that is appropriate. John Gudgel, on behalf of 365 Project, asked us to endorse the policing guidelines as recommended by the Subcommittee of 365 Project. And I wanted to just briefly reference a document that Judith and I submitted. And there are quite a few documents here. And just kind of highlight, this is a proposal for where we would suggest things should move with the lodging tax. And that is to establish a 3% excise lodging tax for the Village of Yellow Springs, to be levied on transient guests, staying at eligible establishments across the board that provide one or more rooms. And Judith, I don't know if you wanted to highlight anything about that one pager?
Well, just to say tonight, well, there's also Chris Conard, our legal counsel, had answered some questions regarding the lodging taxes, which is also in here. We're not going to have a discussion on it tonight. We've had two rather lengthy discussions already. We're not making any decisions tonight. And in fact, the next meeting, the second meeting in July, I'm going to be away. The first meeting in August, we are taking a vacation day, so we're not going to have another meeting until the third Monday in August. And we felt like it was too long to leave since we were kind of working on a proposal, Brian and I, to just leave, say nothing about it. So, that's why we put it in the packet, so that people could see what it is that we're proposing. And, you know, to be... Just to keep it very simple, we're proposing that, you know, this would apply to all lodgings that people provide in whatever venues offer transient guests. So, we... There's a rationale there, which I think is very good. Brian wrote most of this, just to say he highlighted the expense to the village and to the citizens of the village, which the fact that we're a tourist destination town, you know, has been solely, you know, has been greatly on the... A burden on the citizens. And so, finding a way for guests to help, you know, just to help defray some of that expense. So, we intend to bring this back, to bring this to the council August 21st and September 5th. And we, you know, it will be an ordinance in an ordinance form. And at that point, we will have two readings and discussions. Any questions about Chris's information will be answered at that time. And, you know, so that'll be a time when people can participate as we finalize the decision on that.
In order for me to feel comfortable, I may not accuse myself, but... And I don't know if this should be a new agenda, but on the agenda, but I want to know what work staff will have to do in order to enact this and what kind of regulations then will come in regard to the lodging establishments that are non-traditional lodging establishments.
And I did want to say, on a separate note, Chief Carlson has sent out a note saying that he was encouraging the police department staff to participate in the Black History events and, you know, is offering them to log their time for that and thinks it's very important that there be participation. And I wanted to recommend to Patty, and she's not here tonight, that we consider doing this for our entire staff. I mean, he's suggesting to, you know, choose two dates and participate in this as a way of, you know, more outreach into the community, especially more connections with Black members of our community. So, I think that's really good. So, anyway, we might want to come back to this or add it to another agenda.
Sounds good.
Okay. So, we're done with petitions and communications. Okay, public hearings and legislation. We're going next to the second reading and public hearing of Ordinance 2017-12. You can read this in by title only.
All right. This is repealing Section 1048.05 service charges of the codified ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new Section 1048.05 service charges to provide the option of reduced seasonal rates for sewer services for residents whose water use during summer months is greater due to gardening or lawn watering and to provide provisions for separate water metering.
Can I get a motion, please?
You can move.
Second. Okay. I will turn this over to Melissa.
Okay. So, this ordinance was basically a... Partly a housekeeping issue and then partly an update due to the switch from quarterly to monthly billing. This ordinance is addressing two different sections. Section G, which is the summer sewer adjustment, as we all call it, we were basing this off of the quarterly system, and now we are monthly. So, we are still going to utilize the same process of equating this adjustment to sewer. So, this is for water that is used for lawn and garden watering, and the water therefore does not go down the sewer. So, this is an adjustment to people's bills. So, what we will do is we will look at water usage in December, January, and February, and then we will compare that to a customer's June, July, and August water consumption. And anything... Any difference between the winter three months and the summer three months will be credited as a sewer credit on their bill, which they will receive in September, up to 6,000 gallons. So, customers need to apply for this. We will have the application on our website. We had taken it down in order to wait for this ordinance and these changes to come through, so we will be putting that on the website this week, so customers can print it out, fill it out, and bring it to us, mail it to us. Just don't mail it in with your bill, because if you do that, it'll go to Cincinnati and end up in the black hole of the US Bank lockbox. So, just get it back to us, and then we'll be able to reflect those credits in September's bill. So, we also...
I'm sorry, is there a deadline for getting those applications?
It just has to be done before, I would say, September 1st, before the bills are started to be compared for that month's billing, which goes out at the end of the month.
Okay.
So, it will be received on October 1st. There's also a change. So, anybody that lives in a multi-unit housing situation, the landlord will be able to designate a particular tenant if there is an outdoor area. So, that is one of the changes. And then, a change that was made as a result of the last reading of this ordinance is Section H. Section H talks about sewer adjustment meters, and we did take another look at this at the request of Councilman House, and we are going to leave this in here. We do have a few customers that use larger amounts of water and have irrigation systems, so we are going to leave this section in here. So, H basically just addresses anyone that has larger amounts of water that they're going to be using, that they would like to receive that sewer adjustment for. So, if somebody uses over 6,000 gallons and they'd like to install their own meter and have that meter, then they are more than welcome to do that, and that's what this Section H permits them to do.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? This is the second reading and public hearing. I will open the public hearing for comments. Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Sims?
Yes.
Hemfley?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Yes. You lost your voice.
Yeah.
Or you're losing your voice.
Yeah, Melissa, thanks again for... I thought it was a lot of good work on clarifying what that everything means.
No problem. Resolution 2017-32, we'll read this in by title only.
All right. This is approving the Finance Director's 2018 tax budget for the Village of Yellow Springs.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
You can move.
Second. Okay, Melissa.
Okay. Sorry, I'm busy. I was looking for a document that I don't think made it into the packet, but I can touch on it. So, basically, what the tax budget is, just to refresh everyone, is basically what the county does is this is... They require us to have our first exercise in budgeting. And what they do is they provide us with a form that tells us how much property tax that we can anticipate for 2018. So, there is a form that's in there that's provided by the auditor. It outlines the amount of taxes that we would receive in property taxes. So, next year, 2018, we're set to receive $1,036,000 in property taxes. And then, it also breaks that down by what is inside the 10 mil limitation, which means outside of our levy. And then, it also designates the amount of money that our levy would generate. So, $228,000 for our general fund is generated by the property taxes without the levy. And so, that equates to about a quarter of what we receive total. And then, what we receive because of our levy is $778,000. So, basically, what I do is I plug those numbers in and I put in some actuals from 2015, 2016. They have a particular format that they like to see this. So, this is slightly different than what our normal budget looks like that I provide for everybody at the end of the year. So, we've got 2015 actuals, 2016 actuals, and then I do some estimations for 2017, how we might end the year. And then, I also do estimations for 2018. So, what will happen with this is this is provided to the county auditor, and they will supply me with our first certificate of estimated resources for 2018, so that we can file our first budget before the beginning of the year, when we have all of our end-of-year balances. So, what we have as part of the tax budget is we have the general fund, and it breaks down all of our revenues. I expect that our revenues will stay relatively the same. I always take a conservative approach with our revenues, which means that I try to estimate just a slight bit lower. And then, with our expenses, what I tend to do is I try to estimate just a tad bit higher. So, I try to take a conservative approach. So, revenues, I don't see or anticipate any major changes. The second page, it actually breaks down the police department's budget separately, which is labeled as security of persons and property. And we have those previous years and estimations for 2017 and 18. The next page is the rest of our general fund, which is labeled mostly as general government. It also outlines all of our transfers. And then, at the very bottom of that page, it shows what our estimating... Our estimated ending fund balances are. And we are expected to have or maintain a relatively healthy general fund. I anticipate going into 2018, which is always good. I know that a lot of our transfers have been minimal because of cutbacks in spending and just a more conservative approach overall, which is always a good thing. The next page that we have as part of the tax budget is our police pension fund. This is basically a separate fund in which all of our full-time police officers are paid out of. So, this is just their pension portion of their benefits in this separate fund, which has to be listed separately. And then, we have our special revenue funds, which this is formatted just slightly different. It doesn't have a lot of the previous year actuals on here. It just basically is looking at the estimated unencumbered fund balance of January 2018 and those expenditures just for that year. So, there's not any historical information for the special revenue funds.
A quick question about the green space fund.
Yeah.
Does this anticipate the amount that we dedicated for the agraria, Community Solutions?
For expenditure in 2018?
And that should be out. Didn't we already expend that money?
What was the project again, Brian? I'm sorry.
These Community Solutions, to council land first.
That's already been paid.
Okay. So, that's already anticipated?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yep. I'm sorry, I didn't get the question right off. I thought it was a 2018 question. No, that's already been expended.
Okay.
And I had also, basically, with the transfers into the capital improvement funds, you'll see the budget year estimated receipts in there. I did allocate money for the green space again, as well as the capital project funds as well, kind of continuing that work that we'd started with allocating money there as well.
Right. I just didn't realize we had 180, so that's good. And then, also, if we jump down to capital project funds?
Mm-hmm.
That was where I was wondering about our franchise fee. Is that...
It's remitted into the general fund.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Cool.
Okay. And then, the last detailed budget page is the enterprise funds, which is formatted in the same way as the special revenue funds. There's not the history there, but it's the snapshot of 2018. And it's got our estimated unencumbered balances to the far right. So, the enterprise funds are always something that I watch very closely. And they are all slated to be in the black again, which is wonderful news. The very last page that's completed is a schedule of permanent improvements, or capital budget, as we call it. There's not a whole lot that's on here, so it's just 2018, which all of these items will come in front of council for further discussion later. So, this was just a preliminary look of what's coming. Most of this was already provided to council last year, because we look at the capital budget in five-year increments. So, this is what was scheduled for 2018. And I know that there were some grants and things like that that were put on the horizon just to get council to start forward thinking about those things. So, that's basically it for the capital budget. But I did have a one-page sheet, like I said. Somehow, it didn't make its way into the packet. But basically, it's a look at all of our major fund balances. It broke down the general fund and then the enterprise funds as well. And somehow, I don't know if it made it into my packet. It should have. I'm not sure where it went. Anyways, it... I will provide that information to council again, once we do our permanent budget at the end of the fall. It was just a one-pager that showed all of our projected end-of-year fund balances for 2017, and everything was in the black, and it kind of gave a history. So, I've provided it to council a number of times, and I just updated it. So, I can provide that at the next packet, just so that it gets people to start forward thinking.
Good. So, this is the entire packet? All of this information goes to the county?
All of that goes to the county, yes. And then, buried in the packet, it's towards the end, is the proposed 2018 budget schedule, which I know is already... Judy's already incorporated that into future budget items, too. So, we will start that at the second meeting in September, and then we will finish that at the first meeting in December. So, I try to provide a buffer, so that we're not doing the budget right up against the holidays, just in case of, you know, anything going on around that time where we might need to push things around. So, that's that. So, I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
I am curious how you... What the 2018 revenue estimate is based on?
By the county.
In your... Is that from the county?
The property taxes, yes. The county provides that information. That's what starts the tax budget.
Gotcha.
So, basically, the tax budget is kind of an exercise in us demonstrating our need for our property taxes.
Okay. And income tax as well?
Income tax is something that I project.
And what's that based on?
It's based on current year. So, what I basically do, it's a very imperfect estimation that I do. I look at what's been brought in for the year, and I try to use that same basis for trying to figure out what we might bring in for the rest of the year. So, I look at the last... When I did this, I had it... I had all of our revenues as of the end of May, all of the reconciliations done. So, I looked at what we'd brought in for the last five months, as well as utilities. That's how I figured that as well. Looked at what we'd brought in for the last five months and just made assumptions based on those five months. The next seven months would continue in that fashion.
Okay. So, I guess, not to be coy, I was curious if, you know, an upcoming business that we think will come to the community is contemplated in these numbers?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
That would not be prudent.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Not one that might leave.
So, yeah. I mean, I think she's actually being quite conservative, which I think is generally probably pretty good. If we end up with more at the end, if something happens, I think that that's a good thing. But I can understand her desire to be conservative. Any other questions from council? Questions from citizens?
Hi, my name is Dorothy Bouquet. I just wanted a clarification on what enterprise funds were. I saw that you had the utilities listed in that. I just wanted to understand what it was.
Yes, enterprise, they're classified... Utilities are classified as enterprise funds, because they're basically like their own mini-business. We take in consumer fees to be able to pay for that utility. So, all of the money that comes in is used wholeheartedly to support that utility on its own. So, it's considered an enterprise fund. So, we have electric, water, sewer, and our solid waste. Those are the four.
And you expect them to be in the black?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we will... All those in favor, ready to take a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Next is Resolution 2017-33, title only.
Okay. This is approving final legislation accepting a grant from Ohio Department of Transportation for safe routes to schools improvements.
Can I get a motion, please?
You can move.
Second. Melissa, I know this is your project, too.
Yeah, I can take this.
It's a busy day for you.
Yeah. Okay. So, safe routes to school. This is a project that's been in the works for longer than I've been working here. So, I'm really excited that this is starting to move forward. So, this is a pro forma resolution that the Ohio Department of Transportation asked us to pass prior to them putting out to bid the project, which is going to start construction, I think, in August. Well, construction might not necessarily start in August. I think the bid is supposed to be let in August. So, this legislation is the kickoff to that, which is great. What this project is doing, just to refresh everyone's memory, is it is providing a sidewalk along Yellow Springs Fairfield Pike from Fair Acres to Winter Street and along Winter from Pleasant to Yellow Springs Fairfield. So, they are going to be installing sidewalks, which is a great thing. And 100% of the cost is going to be provided by the Ohio Department of Transportation. They're going to select the contractor, and they will begin that work in just a few short months. So, I'll keep everybody updated once that really starts to move. But we're waiting for the project to be let right now.
So, that means if they're putting it out to bids, that means the engineering work is done?
Yeah.
How much did it end up... Is it ending up costing approximately, Julie?
There are a number of different numbers that are in my head as it relates to that project, and I didn't bring up my folder tonight. So, I think it was in the $300,000 range was what that was, because I know that it was a smaller project, and then it was expanded. And this has literally been going on, I think, since 2012. So, it's been a process. But I think it was in the $300,000 range.
Just to say, I think it's really important in terms of safety, children walking from that neighborhood up to school or biking.
Right.
It's really good.
Well, and hopefully, we're going to be on the right track to apply for another one, once we get this one down. Melissa, two questions I have. One, are we still extending the sidewalk up to Stafford?
Yes, we are. I have been working to make sure that all staff are on board and communicating all of this every step of the way with them. So, Jason's aware that the bid should be let very soon. Once I get that information from ODOT, I'm going to make sure that he's in contact, so that full coordination does happen for that. So, whether we use their contractor or we mobilize our own, I'm hoping that that's going to be very seamless, that extension, so.
Okay, good. And I guess my second question is, based on what you're saying about the bid being let in August, so we're talking about, I mean, still in the fall?
Yes, it's going to happen this fall, correct.
All right, good.
Okay. Sure, Chrissy, come on up, please.
I just want to know, I have the packet from Safe Routes to School when it was first all approved and everything. And wasn't there a plan also for a sidewalk to be built around the two streets of Mills Lawn, that there's not a sidewalk, Limestone and Phillips? I thought that was part of the Safe Routes, the whole grant funding for that program, that there would be... You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
It was part of it, but there just wasn't enough funding. I mean, there were... There's a much larger Safe Routes to School plan that's been developed. But this... It was decided, the group got together and decided that for the money that was available, that this was the priority project. So, this is the project that they pursued.
So, then, are we still going to be looking into some way to put sidewalks there? Because I think everybody agreed that would be a place that would... I think everybody agreed that would be a place that would, it would be really nice to have a sidewalk all the way around Mills School property.
Yeah, two things that are happening with that. One is the council goal to have an active transportation plan, and sidewalks would be part of that. But the second thing is, as I mentioned, now that we've completed a Safe Routes to School project, we should continue to apply. So, yeah.
And it's too bad that it's taken so long to get the rest of it together, that the beautiful little bulldog footprints that were painted around town are, most of them are faded away now. So it would be great if we could get to see those get redone, or anyways.
Thanks, Chrissy. Any comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from citizens? Bring it back to council table. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is 2017-34, Judy.
Do you want this?
Let's go ahead and read this one in full.
Okay. This is adopting guidelines for policing for the Village of Yellow Springs. Whereas the Village of Yellow Springs prides itself on having a police department that respectfully serves our community, directly responds to the needs of citizens, and actively ensures the safety of residents and visitors. And whereas this is accomplished through adherence to principles and practices developed through collaboration among council, the village manager, the chief of police, staff, and citizens. And whereas collaboration has been provided for and encouraged by council, with resulting information used to develop the guidelines for village policing attached to Exhibit A. Now therefore, the Council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, Council for the Village of Yellow Springs hereby accepts the attached guidelines for village policing as guiding principles to be used by the village manager and the chief of police in developing and carrying out policing policies, and by Yellow Springs Police Team members in serving the community. Section 2, Council hereby certifies that support of this vision is in accordance with village values regarding provision of a welcoming community that serves and protects people regardless of race, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, ethnicity, economic status, ability, or religious affiliation.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
Come on.
Second. So I will turn this over to either Brian or Mary Ann, who both worked on this project.
Mary Ann?
The impetus for this change, which I think originally maybe we called a vision for local.
Local policing, yeah.
Came from work initially done by council a couple years ago. It's not clear that it was adopted in any way at that point. And I think then the next thing that happened, given the Village Justice System Task Force, was that 365 indicated that they would be interested in taking the original document and making some suggested changes, which a subcommittee of that organization did. It initially came to council then. Council sent it to the Justice Task Force. The Justice Task Force discussed it, made some recommendations. It came to council. And at that point, Brian and I said, we would review that document. We did. We included some of the changes that the 365 group and the Justice Task Force had suggested. And that's the document you see in front of you. I sent it to Brian Carlson, who looked at it and approved it. It was also sent back to 365. And I'm, and there was some discussion with 365. So I'll just leave it at that.
So would somebody, are we looking at the second page with highlighted?
I had put, I had put a note, which somehow didn't get in the packet, explaining that I was gonna suggest a couple of changes or additions, basically, which are the underlined. And the reason, what happened was I had called Brian, saying, and I think there needs to be more explicitly anti-racist language in this document, given the Black Lives Matter movement, and what it is responding to, in terms of that, the history of that relationship with that community. And he said, well, actually, there was language that had been in there from the 365 project, and he, you know, sent it to me. So rather than me rewriting it, I thought I would just look to what they had written. So that was part of it. But then this, the second paragraph, so that, so that there's two places I was going to suggest that we make some addition. The first one is the second paragraph of the introduction. This was language that was from the 365 project, which I would like to make a motion that we add in. And then the, on the second page, under demonstrably inclusive, the underlined is language that I am recommending to council. I wanted to make a motion that we add in.
Before we?
Oh, sorry, go ahead. And the, the part that the 365 project had had in there was just the first, the first sentence, the additional two words, "and" and "anti-racist." I was, it was suggested, because I talked to Janet and Gavin, that I look at, that there was a specific meaning to that concept of being anti-racist, and that I might want to look to that. And so basically, what I did was quote that in the second sentence, the second sentence there. It came from Ontario, their Anti-Racism Secretariat. And then I added a couple little bits, as you can see that's underlined there. So maybe, I don't know if we want to discuss those.
Can I get some clarity first?
Yeah.
So this first page is a document that's been written and approved by the police department, by Mary Ann and Brian and the 365 group. And?
365, there were some significant edits, I think by Mary Ann and Brian, that, you know, they just decided, they just wanted it to go through, but that they had recommended. So I just took it back out. And I thought we should discuss it here. I don't think that's a good language discussion.
You're stepping ahead. I want to understand what this first piece of paper is.
First piece of paper is things that come from the original document that we did, 365 addition, Justice Task Force addition, and edits by Brian and myself.
So this has essentially been through a lot of people, and a lot of process?
Yes.
So the second piece of?
The second one is the same document, just with those additions.
I'm just trying to get clarity, because it wasn't very clear to me in the packet that was presented.
Sorry about that. There was an extra piece that got missed in the packet.
So what you're, so the second page, you're proposing the addition of, the addition and change of everything that's black, underlined, dark black, bold black, underlined.
Right, exactly. Yeah, I mean, Brian had said there was some pushback from the 365 project to include these things. Although, like I said, I added a couple of lines on that part, under demonstrably inclusive. And when I talked to them, they just more or less said, we just want to get it finished, and, you know, we didn't want to discuss it anymore. But I didn't, I didn't get the sense that they actually thought it was necessary. They weren't, they liked the idea of adding it back in, put it back in. The two people I talked to.
I guess I'm just, I'm uncomfortable, because, you know, this first document is something that, you know, council has kind of been counting on all of these folks to be collaborating on this document. And that's what I hear that we have. And now I'm very confused about whether there is a meeting of the minds on your recommendations, Judith.
No, there's not. I'm bringing it as, I'm bringing it as a motion.
So who has seen it and looked at it?
I talked with, well, I guess Brian, Mary Ann have seen it.
Okay, Brian.
And it came from?
Okay, Brian's working on this. Which Brian?
Brian Pausch, and Mary Ann, and Janet Mueller. I mean, they took it to the 365 project. They made it very clear to me it was okay by the 365 project. So they, but I just think we should discuss the merits of it, and decide whether we want to do it or not. If we don't think there's merit, if the council as a majority doesn't think there's a merit, then we won't do it. I mean.
I mean, this is all getting, you know, I'm personally really counting on these folks to bring the language.
They brought the language, and then I think Brian and Mary Ann offered to edit it a little more. And I, and, you know, my understanding was it was going to be just, you know, kind of a.
Can, okay, can somebody speak to the added language?
The document that came through 365, and then had some edits from, I guess actually, Pat DeWes, came to Brian and myself. I, we, I actually did the first initial edit, omitted some of the things that the 365 subgroup had put in. One, because I think a shorter document, I mean, I don't think more words necessarily makes a better document. And I felt that what was taken out was either already included in here, or was not necessary, or was inaccurate or confusing. So Brian and I both thought that this document worked. The 365 subgroup said, well, why did you do the, why did you make those changes? We responded to them, and they said, okay. They may not have liked them, but my feeling was this is coming from, at this point, this is a village document coming from village council.
Okay.
I mean, I think we should just discuss it on the merits. If, I mean, we always make, we certainly have the right as a council to here in a public discussion, make some changes. And that's what I'm suggesting. I'm not demeaning the work that's been done. I talked with a few people. I thought that these things, we should consider adding them back in. And that's all I'm saying. So I guess I want to make a motion that we add in that second paragraph under the, under the introduction.
As well as the additions?
Well, I was gonna do them separately.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was thinking. But if there's not a second, there's no discussion.
Okay, looks like we won't. So you want to move on to the second one?
All right, all righty. Second one, so I added in, so the Village of Yellow Springs aims to be not simply tolerant, but proactively inclusive, and the addition is "and anti-racist." The Village of Yellow Springs and our police department commits to identifying challenging and change, identifying, challenging, and changing the values, structures, and behaviors that perpetuate systemic racism. That's the, the description of anti, being anti-racist from, I just quoted it, because I thought it was good. And so it came from Ontario's Anti-Racism Secretariat. And then I added in, you know, that it says, "Our officers are expected to engage with all community stakeholders," and it listed several stakeholders. I added in, "community of colored churches and civic groups in all faith-based communities." And then the third change was talking about attracting and retaining police officers. And I, and I just added in a diverse workforce in our police department. So those are the changes that I'm suggesting.
Okay, I will second that motion to have the discussion about it, so.
And I, and I just said very simply that I just, I think that, given the fact that there is a national movement called Black Lives Matter, and it's, the fact of that is, there is a reason for that. And it has to do with, you know, a history and a relationship that has been broken, that needs to be, that we need to note in a very proactive way, that, you know, we expect, actually, our village government and our police to be working, you know, against that, that long history, and bringing healing. So that's why I added that in.
Question for you.
Yeah.
Reading the second sentence where it says, "The village prioritizes equitable..."
It's supposed to be equitable practices.
Oh, so there's something?
I think that's missing.
Yeah, practices of hiring, yeah. That's what practices is in the original.
Okay, okay. And then as it goes on, it says, "Stakeholders include youth, parents." Now, the bold and underlying, was that always there?
No.
Or just highlighting?
No.
So what was there?
Nothing. It just went to business owners and entrepreneurs, local education.
And then the last sentence for those collaborative relationships, it says, "The YSPD needs to attract and retain."
And I just added, "a diverse workforce."
So, so before it was?
It just wasn't there.
Retained?
It was, it was officers.
Okay.
Officers who are open.
And excited, yeah.
Yeah. And I thought we might, we should broaden it beyond officers, because within our PD, there's people who are, who are not officers.
I like that addition, and I also like adding the faith-based, the churches of color and civic groups in faith-based communities. It should have been in there in the first place. So although I guess social justice could have covered churches, but.
And actually, those were, those were from Judith. Those were not.
Those are from me.
Those were not in the document we received from the 365 project.
Yeah, I definitely like those additions.
I agree. And I just wanted to say, I mean, for me, unlike the second paragraph to the introduction, which I agree with Mary Ann, I think it's already implied and stated. I do think these are substantive differences that make the document better. Mary Ann, do you want to talk about how you felt about anti-racist, or?
Well, I guess, anti, to me, anti-racism seems, I don't like a negative, negative. That was what, that was the main thing that I didn't like about that. Well, anyway, that is. And I guess, in terms of the next sentence, "community of colored churches," it would seem to me that, oh, and "all faith-based." I don't know that, I mean, we need to single out community of colored churches. It seems like it would be all churches.
How about if that, in that first sentence, if we just take out, we just put the, put the period behind inclusive, and then, but, and so take out an anti-racist, which Mary Ann was uncomfortable with, but then keep in that second sentence?
I mean, I do think that's a constructive statement. And it, it says that, right? So I like that suggestion.
What do we want to do at sentence by sentence? I don't know.
Yes.
Okay. So, so I guess?
I guess I do have one more thing. I mean, racism is a systemic part of our culture, and our government, and everything in this country. Saying that our police department is going to be identifying, challenging, changing the values, structures, and behaviors that perpetuate systemic racism. I don't know. Is that, it seems like that?
It says, "The village, the Village of Yellow Springs and our police department commits to," I didn't, you know.
I have a little influence.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Chris. I talked with Judith about these changes today. And when we were first talking about it, I kind of had second thoughts about the anti-racist thing in there, too, because it seemed to me at first, it was like saying, well, we are practicing racism. But then, when I thought about it some more, and I realized that we are a country that is, like overwhelmingly proven lately, to be racist, that maybe it's more innovative to absolutely come right out and acknowledge it, that there is racism in every area of our country, in our police departments, and even in a very liberal community like ours. So because of that, like I said at first, I was thinking, oh, we don't need to put that negative anti-racism thing in there. Of course, we're all striving to be anti-racist. But then, on the other hand, I think maybe it is important to put it in there and acknowledge it. Acknowledge that it's part of what goes on in this country, and that we don't want to be part of that. And we're not perfect, and we haven't overcome it either. But we want to work towards that goal. So that's just what my thoughts on that.
I'm thinking about inclusive and welcoming, to tie, to tie it back to our, one of our council goals.
Uh huh. I think there's another.
Okay. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
My name is Marie Alexander. And I just have a question. And that is, what is the measure, what would the measure of anti-racist be for the village?
Thank you.
Good question.
And I wonder, I mean, if systemic racism, sexism, I mean, are there other, are there other sorts of? other sorts of, of negative behaviors that we should be calling out, or negative kind, besides just racism? I mean, I know that that is really a focus right now. I know with Black Lives Matter, it's a focus. And, and I, you know, I'm, I'm as concerned about it as anybody, but are we being a little too narrow in our, in our focus?
I, I don't think we are. It's, to me, it's, you know, for years and years and years, people have skirted around the issue. And to me, this brings the issue to the forefront, and it basically says that we as a community and as a police department, that's what we're going to start striving for, and we're saying it, versus, you know. To me, you're either on one side or the other, and we all should be moving in the same direction. You know, we're a small community, but it's got to start somewhere. And I feel that's what we're doing. We're making a start, we're making a statement, with that in there.
I mean, I kind of thought what the chief, you know, is encouraging of his staff, you know, to, you know, learn about the black history of Yellow Springs, to, you know, it's a, it's a very proactive thing for him to be saying, "Not only do I encourage you to do it, but I am supporting you in doing it by, you know, you know, log in and go." And I, I just think that's the kind of, that's one little measure of saying, you know, this, this is important, that we're more knowledgeable, that we have relationships with people in our community across the racial spectrum, and, and that we're actually actively doing things to try to make that happen. And so it's part of the reason, I was really pleased to see, you know, your little note to your staff.
So where are we on this?
Well, so do, I mean, I don't know. Do we want to vote on it?
For the amendment?
So are we going...
Do we just want to vote on the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Or, I don't, that's up to you guys, because I'm going to vote for all of it.
Okay. Well, is there any more discussion before?
We will take out Ontario Anti-Racism Secretariat.
Right.
Okay, maybe we put it in quotes and...
We don't need to reference them.
Okay.
And then, well, because it's a public document, so we can...
Okay.
And then, yeah. And then, secondly, a small thing, but if we can take the "and" away from, in front of "all faith-based communities," so it's just a continuous list.
Okay, oh, okay, sure.
Okay.
And I have one question back to the first page.
Yeah.
Are we now going to, and maybe we do, and I'm just not aware of it, are we going to refer to our police officers as peace officers, or are we going to continue to refer to them as peace officers?
Well, Chief Carlson's taking the lead on peace officers.
Okay.
So, did we not, did we?
Well, it's not consistent.
But where is it not consistent? I thought we did make...
Safety-centered. Safety-centered police, in the middle, about in the middle.
Well, it says police department.
See, I understand the police department.
Which is different from, we're not going to say peace department, maybe.
More concerned from how we're going to address our officers.
I'm pretty sure it's consistent, because that was one of the things I looked for when I went through. I mean, Judy, if you catch anything, I think we should be consistent.
But the intent is...
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I just wanted, I was going to say, I just wanted to say to Mrs. Alexander, is that right? I'm, yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, thinking about, you know, what is the measure, and, you know, but that's true of this whole statement, you know, in terms of what we're, so, I think that we need to be looking at that.
And actually, I'd like to follow up on that, because to me, one of the most important pieces of this is the 365 project subgroup wanting to support how we implement these guidelines for village policing, and so working with, you know, our department and Chief Carlson on that. And that's why also, I do want to mention, one of the things Mary Ann said to the group is things like that, that second paragraph that we did not include would be a great sort of note to submit to council, to say, or to the police departments, to say, "Here are things to think about," you know, to kind of comments to the policy. And so I'd love to see that happen, and moving towards how do we measure these kinds of things, so.
Great. So for, to, are we ready to kind of wrap up? I'd like to...
Yes.
Kind of wrap up this last paragraph. So, "We're keeping an anti-racist." Is that what we decided?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And "We're taking out Ontario Anti-Racism Secretariat." "We're, we're removing and from before all faith-based communities." "We're actually adding practices in, up above the sentence before that. The village prioritizes equitable practices of hiring." And "We're adding in the, the suggestion of a diverse workforce." So, and we had a motion and a second on that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So now we'll go back to the entire, let's, before we vote on the entire document, we'll see if there's any other comments from citizens. Chief, happy?
Happy, and I want to say thank you for the dedicated insight to this. This is a, it's set national standards for a guideline to follow, and it will be implemented. It will be part of hiring, testing, memorization, and of course, put into practice.
And evaluation?
Evaluation. The measure for us in the department for evaluation is the reaction and response that we're getting from the community. So it may sound small, but for us, it's huge.
Good. Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? So we'll take a vote on the language, the guidelines for village policing, modified as we just agreed to. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Oh, that was, not that one. Next is reading of Resolution 2017-35.
This is authorizing the village manager to waive water and sewer tap fees and zoning permit fees for up to eight units proposed for the Garden Cottages Phase One Affordable Housing Project for Yellow Springs Home Inc.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I know that Emily is here, this, and I also believe Melissa's been working on this.
I have not been working on this one.
Apparently Melissa hasn't been working on this.
No.
So this is the, the next big project that Home Inc. is working on. It happens to be a property on the south end of the village on Xenia Avenue. It's currently about an empty acre of land, quite lovely piece of land, actually, and very well situated. So we have Emily here from Home Inc. to describe the project and talk about what they're planning on doing.
Sure, and I did actually include, I submitted a letter. I don't know if it made it into the packet or not.
It did.
Well, it made it to our table.
Well, it actually made it into the packet.
No, there's an updated letter that's on the table.
Because you asked me to, you asked me to rewrite the letter so that it had more statistics broken out, and had, so I, I changed it a little bit. It's all the same information, it's just presented differently.
Right, just re...
But I can go through it.
Yes.
So, "Yellow Springs Home Inc. requests village council support of our next affordable housing project, which is called Glen Cottages, by waiving water and sewer tap fees and also zoning permit fees for up to eight units of affordable housing." And as Karen said, this is on a 1.02 acre parcel of land. It's really a nice location to support intergenerational pedestrian-oriented housing. It's also along the Green Cats Bus Line, very close to the Wellness Center and Antioch College, close to the Gaunt Park and the pool, and I mean, I just think it has a lot going for it. So it's being planned as using the pocket neighborhood design principles. I don't know if it's actually going to be a pocket neighborhood zoning overlay. There is no official pocket neighborhood zoning overlay, so I guess it's a moot point right now, but we'll, we'll figure that out as we go along. So we're not asking for final project approval by any means. We'll go through the zoning process. And so the pocket neighborhood design principles were responding essentially to what we've heard from villagers, which is a desire for a type of residential living that encourages community, walkability, shared outdoor spaces, high levels of energy efficiency, accessibility, and smaller building footprints, and a cotted, really attractive sort of garden cottage style. And so we hope to develop a neighborhood that's comprised of single-family and attached garden cottages, and it'll be a mix, we anticipate, of rental and for sale, and it will be a mixed-use project, partly out of a result of our broadening focus, because we've realized that we have to create a variety of different kinds of affordable housing to meet the really enduring and increasing need for affordable housing. So Phase One will result, we anticipate, in up to six rental units and two for-sale units affordable to households that would be making between 50 and 80 percent of area median income. And that's approximately $22,000 a year in income to up as much as $50,000 a year in income, depending on household size. And it'll, Phase One will also feature some accessible or adaptable housing that's, will also benefit seniors who are aging in place, as well as household with special, households with special needs. And so then we'll plan a subsequent phase, is the idea. And so we're asking for a fee waiver right now, at this point in the planning, before there's even a site plan, primarily to help leverage $350,000 in grant funding from outside of the community to help make the project possible. The soft costs for, even this is, though this is kind of a big project for us, and will make an impact in Yellow Springs, it's a small project in the world of affordable housing. And so one of the benefits for a tap fee waiver and zoning permit fee waivers is that it lowers the soft costs, which are already high, because it's a smaller number of units relative to the other projects we'll be competing against for funding. And so on August 1st, we're going to submit, we hope to submit two funding applications, one for up to six rental units, and another one for up to two for-sale units, and that would be, again, for $350,000 to the Federal Home Loan Bank of Cincinnati to fill the gap between what we can charge in rent that's affordable to someone making between 50 and 60 percent of area median income, or in the for sale for someone making up to 80 percent in the total cost to develop. And it's significant, the gap. But for the Forest Village Homes project, we had to raise almost $900,000 for six units. And that enables us to keep the rents low over, you know, a generation or more, because we have to project way out into the future with costs. And so it is a competitive scoring criteria to get local support. It will result in a more competitive funding application. But a full fee waiver would also go a long way in showing local support to funders such as the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, and we do for this first project phase anticipate going in for an additional, at least, $700,000 in, in funding applications. And I know for the OFA, while it's not a competitive scoring criteria, they did cite the tremendous local support for Forest Village Homes as one of the reasons that they gave us the funding, which was competitive. I said earlier, it, it reduces the soft costs, which in turn reduces the, either reduces the overall cost to develop, or frees up some funding in our budget to be able to invest into amenities that directly enhance resident life. And, you know, I mean, so the, every cost is a trade-off, and so that if we're spending money on tap fees, that means we can't apply it somewhere else. Also, we, just from pure economic development, we anticipate this affordable housing project phase to generate probably upwards of $1.2 million in local economic development. It will also improve infrastructure in a now mostly vacant lot in the high-density residential corridor, and we very conservatively are estimating upwards of $10,000 year-end property tax revenues, new property tax revenues over and above what's being generated by the vacant site. And then, you know, I mean, there are, I think, some value-oriented reasons why affordable housing is important in our community. It meets, this project will meet local values as well as public priorities. Village Council value number three is to be a welcoming community of opportunity for people of diverse races, ages, sexual orientations, cultures, and incomes. And I can't think of a better way to support that goal than by supporting affordable housing. Affordable housing is also listed, as you know, as a top public priority in the comprehensive land use plan, the 2010 visioning, and by way of incentives in the 2013 zoning code. And I'm almost done, but I have to say, every time I get up here, that this meets a critical need in the village. The need for affordable housing is growing, and it's enduring, and there are people that we all know, and probably people that we don't realize, are struggling with being housing cost burdened. A 2014 study that we commissioned, shipped by Bowen National Research, indicated that more than 43 percent of renters and 28 percent of homeowners in Yellow Springs today are housing cost burdened, meaning they pay more than 30 percent of their income to housing. Some people pay a heck of a lot more than that, and once you cross that threshold, you feel it in other areas of your lives. Certainly, you know, in terms of the utility bills coming your way, medical bills, the cost of insurance, childcare, it all starts to add up really fast. And we, we believe very strongly, and I think the village does too, that affordable housing and income diversity in particular really strengthen the vitality of our community. And because the, because we're Community Land Trust, we're not walking away after the government-mandated affordability period for this particular project. We'll be around as, as long as possible, ideally for generations, to make sure it continues benefiting the public good of affordable housing, as well as empowering low-income residents.
Thanks, Emily. Comments, your questions?
Well, yeah, I would like to recommend that we do the full waiver for the eight units, which would be $6,505. I think that the value that we get from that, I mean, Emily has already said that, monetarily, the two grants that would make this project competitive, both for the Federal Home Loan Bank grant of $300,000. And I can tell you, it would also make us, make the project competitive for the Federal Home, for the Ohio Housing Finance Agency of $500,000, $800,000. So $6,000 for $800,000. But the other thing is, we, we've just supported the Council Land Trust effort to preserve farmland outside the village, and to permanently, well, not just farm, that, prefer, permanently preserve that land. This is the other side of that, permanently preserving land in the village for affordable housing in perpetuity. I mean, Emily has gone through the economic value and the social values that we give, and the housing values, but I see those two things as standing side by side. If we preserve land outside the community for farmland and natural resource value, preserve land inside the value permanently for affordable housing, so that's my recommendation.
A few things. So first of all, I do want to add to what Emily said, you know, we have several village values that are, you know, tied into this project, like our value of lowering our, our carbon footprint, and not to mention a variety of village goals that tie to affordability. So, you know, that is also important, I think, in this. And Emily, just two things I want to clarify. Is it true that, as the resolution says, that we're talking about a waiver for Phase One specifically at this point?
Yeah, I, I think just because it is unknown how many units it'll end up being, because we don't have a site plan yet, I thought probably the most, the safest thing to do in terms of you knowing exactly what you're committing to would be to just bring Phase One.
Okay.
Unless you want to just approve the whole project. Your discretion.
See, and then, yes. And then my second question is, can you just briefly elaborate on, when you give us numbers like 3.5 million economic development for the 22 projects, you know, we currently have, or the 1.2 for, for this? or the 1.2 for, for this, what, where that number's derived, what you're talking about?
That's the total cost to develop, which, not the ongoing cost, but the, the total cost to develop. So that's not just the bricks and mortar, that's all of the soft costs, the land acquisition, engineering fees, architectural, business planning. I mean, there's a lot that goes in with developing real estate, so it's the whole.
Does that, do those numbers also include the property tax from improvements in the property?
Just during the build phase.
Okay.
In, in a rental project, we do what's called an interim budget, and that's where the economic development number comes from. But then there's also the, you have to do a minimum of a 15-year pro forma, but then it has to cash flow for 30 years, and that's a totally different thing.
Right. Do you have any numbers in your head about sort of like, pre and post-improvement in terms of, you know, how that changed the property tax?
Oh, I'm not, I don't remember off the top of my head what the property taxes are on the unimproved parcel. Do you know what vacant lots are going for? But it's, it's a lot less. I mean, the, it goes way up. I think, I think we had budgeted something like $500 a lot is what we were getting for, or being charged for the Cemetery Street lots. And then, once they were improved, I think the, the four together are generating almost $14,000 a year. So, two to four, I mean, it goes way, it goes up a lot.
Didn't I hear you say that you were estimating it would be $10,000 annually in?
That's conservatively, since we, I, I anticipated it'll probably be a lot more than that, but I would say conservatively, $10,000, more than, over $10,000 a year.
Yeah, I do want to point out that in Forest Village, which is the Dayton Street project, we did cap it at the $500, and Emily has said that that was looked upon quite favorably by these lending institutions, or these funders. So, I, I guess I, you know, I, I absolutely support what Home Inc.'s doing. I absolutely recognize that this is part of our village values, part of our, our visioning, part of what we want to do. But I also recognize that, that there are a lot of other citizens in the village whose bills are going up, and any utility rates are going up. So, any, any money we can retain within the system, I think, is, is something to consider. And Emily had said last week that the five, that $500 is, is kind of the minimum that they are looking at.
And there are two different funding applications, and one is the Federal Home Loan Bank, and the $500 does get you, gets, doesn't get you the points for that one. And then, later on, we're, I believe that a full waiver would probably be more compelling to the Ohio Housing Finance Agency.
So, are you saying that you didn't get all the, you're having issues with the funding on Forest Village, since we?
No, we're not having, no, we're not having issues, but I just, I think, given the, the range of ways that a municipality can support affordable housing, a full waiver makes a stronger statement.
I had said something that was confusing, confusing to people the last time we discussed this, because this comes out of our utility funds, or, you know, the money's not going into the utility funds, that, you know, did we want to, some, another way we could do it is to pay the, out of the general fund, you know, that, that fee. I mean, that would be another way to do it. But I, I feel like this isn't the place to be stingy, and it's not that much money. And I understand, you know, Karen, I mean, I feel like the whole of council's been very supportive of affordable housing, which has been great. So, but just to say, we're not talking about a huge amount of money, there's very, I mean, the whole affordability issue is becoming such a dire issue within the village. And of course, you know, this, what, what Home Inc. does in affordable housing doesn't touch the other affordability issues that a lot of people are struggling with. But nonetheless, so I just, and I wasn't trying to say anybody would be stingy, but just to say.
But before, before we. It is important to, to consider, Patty did provide a sheet of all of the investment we've made in Home Inc. projects to date, and it's been pretty significant.
Right.
So I think that, you know, I think the village has been generous. I think the generosity, especially on Cemetery Street, because of the selling of the property at half-value, and because of the new water line, was significant. And so, I think that, I think that, you know, we, we just need, we need to make sure that we're, that we're giving ourselves credit and understanding all of the ways in which we have worked with Home Inc. on several projects, and will continue to work with Home Inc.
And I guess I do want to just make sure this is totally clear. So, from the summary we have, it looks like we've never given a full waiver on any of the projects. Is that?
I actually think that Village Council has given a full waiver. I think that the TAP, the cost of TAP fees has, has changed over the years.
Okay.
But it would be probably helpful to get clarification from Patty, and I could also look at our records of what was committed to other projects.
Forest Village, and I think I remember that now, I mean, the TAP fees haven't, haven't changed, didn't change with Forest Village. That was just last year.
I think for West Davis Street, they were more significant.
That could be.
And I think it actually does say that those, it does appear that West Davis and Cemetery Street did give, or did get full.
Not Cemetery Street, according to this, but Davis, maybe, it's unclear. So, but related to that, Emily, Ohio Housing Finance Agency.
Yes.
You've applied to, for funding from them in all these projects, or?
No, that we've applied and received funding for Forest Village Homes. We did, they haven't funded homeownership for a long time, and that's what we've been doing, so it, it hasn't been an option on, on most of the other projects.
Okay. So I want to make one more comment. I've been thinking a lot about this, and I feel like an argument that hasn't been highlighted in the great work that I think Home Inc. does, is that you guys are truly a village partner that's actively going out there, and land that, I mean, I'm not sure that anybody's after, or is planning to develop, you guys are putting in all this effort to make that happen. And I just want to emphasize that piece, is that I, since I've been on council, I don't know of any other developers or organizations that are making, you know, this proactive, you know, jump towards this activity. And so I guess that ties into what Mary Ann said. I'm impressed by, you know, not only does it tie to our village values, but it, we're also improving property in a way that supports the village and our community members.
And I think, I think that's absolutely important, but I will say that the waivers we're giving, the, the funding that they're getting is lowering the cost. For, for profit developers don't get the same kind of benefits. So developing property is much more expensive than it is for Home Inc., because they're getting, they're getting low-interest loans, they're getting waivers, they're getting funding in different ways. So, I absolutely agree with you that the work they're doing is phenomenal. I think that, that the cost of development in Yellow Springs and the cost of property is making it more difficult for, 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 for profit developers to develop. And, and so, I, I don't want to diminish that.
I, I agree that there are a lot of building challenges in Yellow Springs, and the only thing I would add to that is that we're competing against every other community in Ohio. And most affordable housing agencies get the land for free, they get it donated out of a land bank. Sometimes they get tax abatement. I mean, they're doing things on a big enough scale that the soft costs are a lot lower per unit, and so we did have to overcome a hurdle with Forest Village Homes and the cost per unit. And I think that's, I, I think every developer or, or potential developer in Yellow Springs faces that reality as they're looking at the, the big picture. So, I mean, we are definitely in a competitive industry too, even in affordable housing.
I mean, I feel like it's a small amount of money we're talking about, and I, I don't understand, I, I, we've been very, we've done a lot over the years in supporting the Home Inc. proposals, but it's been over many years, and, you know, this is a small amount of money for a very large good. And so I would urge council that we go for the full. We're talking about, what, $65,000?
$6,505.
$6,505. And so, I, I, I feel a little bad that, I feel like we kind of are always a little reluctant, and I don't, I wish, I mean, I don't.
That we're what?
That we're always a little, there's always a little bit of unease or reluctance, or it seems like a lot of times in these discussions.
I think it's important for the community to hear these discussions. And because there, I mean, I will be quite honest, there are folks who, who don't necessarily think we should be doing this. So I think when we have these discussions, good discussions, I think that it helps explain why we're doing this, and it helps show the support we have.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, I, I'm very supportive and always have been, but I do want to make sure, as Karen said, that, you know, these issues are all clear, what we're doing, what the intent is. So.
I'm not comfortable with this, the language of Section Two. If we're, it seems to me it could be simplified just by saying full waiver, if that's, if that's where we are. But no greater than, I think that this was anticipating potentially not giving all of the waivers. So if we're going to give a full waiver, it seems that there's a much easier way to say this, Judy.
Well, the, I mean, the only, the reason for the cap is that the zoning fees are unclear. It's unclear whether it will come in as duty or pocket neighborhood development, or the, the amount of the zoning.
So that's why I'm saying, it, this, having a particular number doesn't make sense. It should be, probably be something as simple as village government will take the form of fee forgiveness of all TAP and permit fees.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second.
And I, and I think we might want to consider whether we want this coming out of a different place than our util, you know, like I say, if we want to reimburse it to our utility funds.
Could you weigh in on that? Not right now, but could you?
I mean, something we may want to consider, yeah.
I would like to go back to Patty's document, though, because in looking at our TAP fees, Patty does touch on this in her report. The last time our TAP fees were increased appears to be 1986. And she does put in her report that the cost of the water tap equipment we supply is $450 a unit, and our TAP fees are only $375. So they have been long overdue for a look at TAP fees in general.
Yes, I, I noticed that, and I was going to suggest, but I think it's a separate issue.
Correct.
That staff, that these fees be changed to reflect the actual cost.
Correct.
So, but Melissa, just to clarify that, I mean, so, we get $750. So, is it $450 times two? Is that supposed to be water tap?
That's just water, $450 for just the water tap.
So what about?
The actual cost of sewer isn't in here, and I'm not sure what that is. I don't know if that was still being gathered by Jason, because that would fall under his purview.
Because that, that's why I'm confused.
Well, but the $375 and the $450, I mean.
So those are just supposed to be tied together? So the sewer?
Correct.
So, but there is equipment cost for sewer tap?
Yes.
Okay.
And there are also labor costs associated with our staff.
So let's, I mean, that sounds like, I think you're hearing council give you the go-ahead to start working on that.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got a motion, and whatever that last sentence was, I just said. I hope you wrote it down, Judy.
Are you saying village government contribution will take the form of fee forgiveness of all TAP and permit fees?
Does that sound?
Yes.
Yes. Excuse me.
Are we limiting that to Phase One?
Yes.
That's, that's in the resolution.
That's Section One. Yeah, we won't change that. Okay, so we have to vote on that?
Okay, yes. Is this, are we, are we voting on that amendment?
Yes, because I have another amendment.
Okay, so, we'll vote on that amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'd also like to make a motion to add a whereas, because I think it's important that we refer to our village values and council goals. And I think it can simply say that, Judy, if, if we vote to add that. But I, I think that's not highlighted in here, and again, this is intentional investment in economic development.
What is the whereas?
Whereas, because this, you know, furthers our village values and council goals, I did not write it down.
Should I add Emily's document? Emily's document references Village Council Value Number Three to be a welcoming community of opportunity for people of diverse races, ages, sexual orientation, cultures, and incomes.
I guess I'd, I'd rather broaden it, though, because probably at least three of our village values apply to this.
Okay.
So, you know, whereas this, how about, whereas this is an intentional investment in economic development that furthers village values and council goals. So that's my motion.
So, motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Judy, have you gotten all this?
Heck, no. But I'm sure I did.
Well, we got the video, there you go.
I'm here, though.
Okay, are we done? Any other comments or questions from citizens? Thanks, Emily.
Thanks.
I just, I did want to say that I've just been very impressed by the capacity, the growing capacity of Home Inc., the work they're doing, and the people that are working with them and working for them. It's, it's, it's really positive, and the village is really going to need their help in the next year, so I think that's excellent.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Last but not least, Rumkey, 2017-36.
This is extending the Village of Yellow Springs contract with Rumkey Incorporated for refuse and recycling services.
Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Can you help handle this, I hope?
Yes, actually Patty handled the, the contract portion of this, but I know enough about what's happening that I can at least fill council in. So, what happened was in 2015, council entered into a two-year contract with Rumkey with the option to extend it for three one-year periods thereafter. So this contract that we have, this resolution that we have in front of us is to extend it for one year. So that time period would be from September 1st, 2017, to August 31st, 2018. So this would be the first of three-year options. There are, I don't think any major changes. The contract is here, and all of the pricing is the same as what it was in the 2015 contract. Basically, what they did was, they, they gave the pricing for all of the, the year, multi-year options, and so this is just an agreement to extend it for one more year based on those terms.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council?
I have a comment. I will vote for this, but I want to say that in Canada, they recycle all plastics, one through seven. Now, I know we have a little different government than Canada does, but you would, I would think that in the United States, we would be able to do the, the same, recycle one through seven. Whereas, with this current contract, the recycling of plastics is really limited and always changing, so people never really know what you can recycle in terms of plastic. Now, the Environmental Commission, one of our members is working on this, but just to say.
That's what I was going to suggest, that, that the last time, I, I'm not even sure we got a bid, other than from Rumkey, and so, and I don't, I don't know that anybody else is recycling anything else either.
But you'd think if they could do it in Canada, they could do it in the United States.
Well, they're obviously, they must be.
They have different priorities.
They must be supplement, I mean, I'm assuming that there is some supplementing of it, or something.
Mary Ann, just to piggyback on the recycling piece of it, there was discussion at the last meeting about informational piece to residents about recycling and what's acceptable and what isn't. And actually, we had two boxes of these one-page flyers that were provided by Rumkey that were updated, informational pieces about what's able to be recycled and what isn't. And we got those to Smartville, which is the company that prints our utility bills, and they won't go in the, well, they didn't go in the one that hit for July 1st, but they will go in the August bill. So, we're trying.
Thank you. Okay. Any comments or questions from citizens? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What, oh, I'm sorry, Jerry.
I think that we got an answer, and why not? We're asking.
Well, this question has been asked of Rumkey before, and they, what they have said is that there's not a market, and sometimes there's a market for one kind, and sometimes there's a market for another. And so a lot of people don't know, and they throw in yogurt containers and stuff, but they don't recycle those.
Although, my, my experience is, is that the, is that the waste hauler actually tells people to throw in whatever they have in case something changes, because it is so sporadic. So, I, I mean, I don't know, it's probably going to end up in the landfill, which it would end up in the landfill, whether, so.
Yeah, I don't know. Sometimes you put stuff in that you shouldn't, and then they throw it all in the, you know.
They're, supposedly, they don't do, they sort it. I mean, they. They're, supposedly, they don't do, they sort it. I mean, they, and Environmental Commission has gone to Rumkey and looked, and my understanding is that they were pretty comfortable with what they saw there. I mean, certainly, everybody would prefer there be more extensive recycling, but they can only do what they can do at this point. Did, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Now is the point in the meeting where we hear from citizens about items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you come up to the podium, and you have three minutes. Give your name, and anything? Okay. So the only other thing, other than reports that I asked the, there was a memo that, that Patty prepared, that I asked her to prepare, so, and I'm sure Emily can answer any questions, but when, in the development agreement with Home Inc. for Cemetery Street, if you recall, that property was originally going to be a parking lot. We ended up deciding to sell the lots that we sold to Home Inc. for residential, keeping the rest of the property, thinking that maybe it would partially be a parking lot, that, that what was left could be a parking lot. So the idea was that a berm would need to be constructed to separate the residential from the parking lot. At this point, I don't know that there is, you know, that there's really a big desire to turn it into a parking lot. I don't know that it's something that village staff is really prioritizing. If there would be an opportunity to consider residential development on the rest of those lots, having the berm there would be a negative. So at this point, and actually, and the development agreement was pretty ambiguous, because the development agreement basically said, "Home Inc. or the village will install a berm." So it wasn't a task that was specifically assigned to Home Inc. So the, the solution that, that Patty came up with is that, is that we would just grade it out. I think that there are some things being removed, and I think it's going to be graded slightly, but we won't build the berm, and then we'll just leave it. If, if it is decided to put a parking lot in there, we can add a berm when we do the parking lot. So it's going to have to be legislation. So I just wanted to give council a pre, a preview to that legislation that will be coming at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, the manager's report. Melissa, did you want to review what was on there?
Sure. There was Rumkey, which we just spoke about, the solar array, the construction of the fences started around the solar array. That's a really hard word, just get out. Ribbon cutting is expected in August. Complete streets, so the village is working towards a plan with a did-ones policy. And, let's see, it's going to be a long-term process, and we still may periodically experience brown water, because this is going to include old water lines. So I know that the new plant coming on, a lot of people were really looking forward to improved water quality, and I know that some of our lines are still very old, and will need to be, water will be, need to be ran through those, so we might still experience periods of that. Bryant Center parking policy, there have been a number of issues as it pertains to parking at the Bryant Center for events. We've had some issues with our first responders not being able to exit as a result of some of those events. So we are going to be looking on, or looking at, working on a plan for those larger events, so that we can ensure that the police department and our emergency equipment are able to exit in a, in a, in a manner that's better for everybody here. So Sutton Farmhouse is going to be burned down by the Miami Township Fire Department on Saturday, July 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. There will be an area for visitors and spectators, but there will be no parking at Sutton Farm for the exercise. And parking along 343 will be prohibited, so please don't park along there either. So you'll have to park probably along 68 and take the short walk up the hill. So it looks like that's it from...
Patty, your report?
Okay, from mine...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Getting back to the Bryant Center parking policy, will that be in place by the next street fair? Do we know?
I agree. Fair is an issue.
I don't think that it will be. I think that the next large event that's going to be happening is going to be Springs Fest. So I think that what they're going to do is they're going to take, start taking a look at the dynamics and how we might be able to better position either the cruisers or the, limit the parking spaces for the people that are having the events, something to that nature. So I think that Springs Fest is going to be kind of the first exercise in figuring out options. So it'll be kind of a trial run.
Next year?
July?
July. Springs Fest is happening this month.
Okay, so you're hoping to have a better plan by...
Yes. I mean, we actually have parking passes, and the system that we use for street fairs actually works. It's, it's pretty organized.
So I'm assuming that there'll be some cross-feed between the two?
Yes.
If, if we got a system that appears to work, then don't spend the time and reinvent the wheel.
Yep.
Can I, can you just explain very briefly what, how are cars parked, so that the police were having trouble?
I, Brian, do you remember how that happened?
It was a vendor situation.
Oh.
At Pride event.
Okay.
And in a way, I kind of take responsibility, because when I arrived, I saw that it was, wasn't right, but we still had access. And then once, that, that's kind of like New Year's Eve, everybody comes at the last minute. And so it was, it was very clustered. So in the future, for all events, we're going to have the officers on duty. Everyone's going to be aware. If we have to, we'll orchestrate, hey, we need to move this truck a little over here, keep the circle open, that kind of thing. And we've got, you know, the parking lot is something that we're looking at now. Jason, Johnny, and Patty and myself regarding repaving. We want to clean up the front entrance some. We've got that circle down there that really creates kind of a bottleneck. You come around the building, and then there are two signs that say, "You can't go this way," so people have to kind of do the multi-backup to get back out. So we've got some things to work out.
I see.
Maybe taking those big overgrown U's out of there that have probably been there since the building was built. And cleaning up that area, maybe a bigger area for bikes, getting tables, that kind of thing. We've got some stuff on the plate.
That would be great.
Yeah. And I, also from reading Patty's summary, I got the impression that we're going to put some of the onus on the organizers as well, right? We have a plan, and so they need to make sure...
You know, vendors, vendors park where you tell them to park. So that...
Absolutely.
And, and the other thing, I'm, I'm assuming if you're looking at the parking lot, that you're looking at the drainage, you're looking at the stormwater that is just pouring across that parking lot.
Yeah, Jason's addressing that.
Okay. Your assistant manager's report?
Okay, so I know that there have been conversations about the impact of the new water plant construction on Jacoby Road. And although Jacoby Road is in Xenia Township, a lot of the wear and tear that has happened to the road over the course of the water plant construction has been the village's responsibility. So what, what is going to happen is Xenia Township is writing a grant in order to have that road repaved, and the village was going to contribute towards that, since we were such a big, a big factor in the need for that repaving. So Patty and I had spoken about it, and we were going to appropriate $10,000 from the general fund in 2018 to go towards the repair of Jacoby Road. And if council would approve that this evening, we would be able to give Xenia Township that confirmation, so that they can go ahead and start writing that grant. So we just need to give them approval on whether or not we'll be able to contribute.
I move that we put $10,000 in the budget for, to go toward the repaving of Jacoby Road.
Second.
All those in favor, seeing anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. This is a great, this has been a great collaboration. We actually stopped Xenia Township from repaving. That road was on their 2017 schedule to repave, and we stopped them from doing that. So this has been a great collaboration. I think, I think actually, Bob Guyer, the county engineer, is going to end up doing some work that's going to even improve it more, so that's going to be a good thing. Is there anything else?
The last piece that I had was on Thursday and Friday, I attended training from the state auditor's office on the finance software that I was looking to sign on with. We didn't pay anything for any of the, we didn't pay anything upfront for any of this. So when I went to the training, what I realized is the software's really slick, and it does a lot of things that I really liked, including improved financial reporting. However, once I went through the training, I learned very quickly that the conversion process was not something that I was willing to undertake, as we would have lost all of our history, and everything would have had to have been converted manually. And I was unaware of that fact. So it would have been a lot of work. We would have had to input all of our purchase orders and revenues and everything from, that have occurred since the beginning of 2017. And our municipality is a much larger one in terms of transactional, day-to-day transactions. So once I seen, once I realized that the conversion was not going to be an imported process, as it is with most other software programs, and it would have to be all manual on the part of Susie and myself, I started to have, I started to reconsider that. So I think that at this point, we, we weren't invested financially in any way, and I think I'm just going to leave this alone and just continue on with our current software for now. We're doing the utility billing conversion, and the timing of it was going to be really tough in terms of having to convert all of that manually with the utility billing conversion as well. So I'm going to put this on hold.
Okay.
So that's that for me.
And council, was everyone okay with the budget schedule? Everybody going to be in town for those meetings? Okay. Chief? Good evening.
Chief Carlson? Feels good to say that.
Picture.
Oh, fantastic. Nice. On June 23rd, I'm, I'm not sure if you were aware of the details, but I wanted to share them with you. A large truck overturned on the south end of town on Hyde Road. I believe it was the company that was delivering some of the bouncy houses and things to the event that day. But the wind was horrific. It blew the truck over, and it took out the power for many residents on the south end of town. That was early. My thanks to the village employees who were on scene outside all day in the horrible weather working to keep us all safe and regain power. Guys were amazing. I mean, Johnny's crew just went at it. Later in the day, after we regained power on the south end of town, a tree fell out of the glen, over the bike path, and took out a DPNL line, one of the main lines. So Jason, some of the police officers, we were out there taking the tree down to get it off the line, but we had to wait for DPNL to come. That's why we had so much power outage that day. It was inspirational for me to have Jason, Brad, the crew, Ken Metz, off-duty detective Jeff Moore from Xenia, Johnny Burns' crew, other volunteers that showed up to assist in the police matters. And we were here till 8:00 or 9:00 at night, and these, these guys really care. And I drove home, and I, I thought it was truly inspired in the people that I work with and that we have served in the community here. Bartley stayed on scene to make sure the servers were back up and running. I mean, it was just, everybody came together, and the little things behind the scene that residents and the public don't get to see. So anyway, I had to share that. On the 24th, the PD participated with Miami Township Fire and Rescue in the Pride Walk through the village in celebration of humanity, our beautiful people and community. And we had a blast. So unfortunately, next year, we're going to have to work out some of the details, but I think we'll do a little better next year with the, the event. This is a repeat, but I know Judith was unaware. I think she had been gone at one of the council meetings, but I do want to give you an update. We did join the Ohio Collaborative Community Police Advising Board. The Ohio Collaborative, a 12-person panel, established state-level policing standards for the first time in Ohio's history on August 28th, 2015. The Collaborative works closely with law enforcement agencies to implement compliance standards across the board within the department, from tech to policy to, to how we interact with the community, with an expectation that each member department meet or exceed these standards. I think this is important, because the big compliance group in the United States for law enforcement is Kalia, and we're such a small department, we can't, the expense of that just isn't justified. But Ohio Collaborative is available now to all sides agencies, and we're going to be able to kind of cherry-pick some policy we don't have, that we can amend later, but that will bring us up to compliance. For example, implicit bias policy, which we don't currently have. So we'll put that in. Once we reach the standards and we can pass, then we can come back, regroup, and do things how we'd like. So I'm excited about that. I mentioned to Patty in my last meeting, I'm real interested in feedback regarding interactions with officers and dispatchers. So to the citizens, please call, call me, email me anytime with comments, good or bad. I need to know. Otherwise, I don't know. And we've been getting a lot of positive feedback on some things that we share within the building, and it's kind of building camaraderie. But please talk with family, friends, your children. Ask them to say hello to when they see officers. Strike up a conversation if they can. And again, just let us know how things are going. Last but not least, and I don't want to ramble on, but I did want to give you an update on what's on my front burner, if you will. Patty and I are working to put together a job description for a police social worker. I think that's prudent. I think it's something on a daily basis. I'm seeing the need for more and more, and how that would work for us. So we'll be working on that, hopefully, within the next few months. Maybe by year's end, we can have that employee in place. Judy and I are going to have lunch in two weeks down at Miracle Clubhouse. They work with developmentally disabled, and most importantly, they're substance abusers who have turned their life around. And so I have met with several of them, and they have volunteered to come in and speak with our officers about their former lives as heroin addicts living on the streets in Cleveland and Columbus, and how they have turned their lives around and work today, which I think would just be wonderful. Walks with an officer are going to start. The end of July, we'll have our first meeting, and then we're going to start that in August. The, excuse me, the program that we wanted to put together, Chrissy's gone now, but the village is going to donate our bicycles, once they're cleared through the court system, to Bryant's group. And then, without us being even involved, the schools are going to help us get those out to the kids that need them.
Awesome.
And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
One quick one, Brian. Do you think it would be a good idea related to feedback, to set up the option of anonymous feedback?
Absolutely.
A box or something?
Absolutely. Well, a box would be great. That makes it personal that way. I'm also working on getting our webpage vamped up, because we really don't have anything. We have a picture with old employees, and so those are things that are on the back burner. But yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Brian, are the adults still carrying bike lights with them?
Yes.
And the reason I bring that up, because still seeing, and it's mostly the adults now riding their bikes at night with no lights.
Right. Anybody we see, we try to give them to.
Okay.
And another project you may be aware of, I don't know if you've been contacted, the Senior Center is, received a grant to do a dementia study, and, and basically to set up a program called Dementia Friendly Yellow Springs. So that's going to go across, they're going to work with the chamber on, on bringing businesses in, obviously the police department on, on training police officers. So I've encouraged Kate LeVac, is it LeVacon?
Yeah.
To potentially coordinate. I don't know if there's a coordination there with NAMI, but there could be. So...
I think she just reached out the last couple of days.
Right. So it's just another, another one of those things that I think is going to set us apart and bring more opportunity to be more inclusive and friendly and welcoming.
Thanks for doing the bike thing. I think that's great.
Oh, yeah. Well, thank you, Brian. And we'll get it. And I guess, the bikes that we, that aren't usable, you found a place in Springfield that, that they teach kids how to fix bikes?
Yep. And then once they go through the program, they get the bike.
Yep. And so I think that's pretty cool.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
As I was...
Great.
I say one more. Since this is our last official meeting before, on 4th of July tomorrow, is there anything that the citizens need to know about parking and...
It'll be as it usually is. We're going to do the best we can with our sides. Ken Metz is out and he hurt his back. So, he usually is, plays a big part in that. But I've got myself, Naomi will be on that tomorrow all day. We put, there's no parking on West South College end to end. We'll have the, no police tape up where there's no parking. The lot will be for handicap as always. We will have officers letting people in and out. Just be respectful and enjoy yourselves. I think, you know, Colin is going to make the call whether we cancel or not, and it will be late. So, if, in other words, if he makes the call, he may wait as late as 9:00 p.m. But we called it earlier. We decided in the past and then the rain went away. So, we wanted to give the public the opportunity to still enjoy it since we don't have a rain date this year.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Judy?
Well, this is a little bit repetitive, but I'm going to read it anyway because it's not horribly late and I do want to give the shout-out. So, it's been very busy. My job is out of sync with most other employees in terms of busy times because I work around council meeting schedules and they mostly work directly on village utilities and safety. So, that gave me a pretty inactive front seat for last, and that would be the previous last Friday series of unfortunate events and left me, as it does every time, very appreciative of my fellow employees and very grateful for the work they do. And as Brian mentioned, there was an overturned solar which cut off power and that meant that dispatch and the village manager's office were immediately flooded with phone calls. PD was engaging in traffic control, accident reports, first responder duties, the electric crew was responding to the downed line. Shortly thereafter, then the limb fell and took out the DPNL line, which powered most of the rest of the village. Then the streets crew was out to remove the limb, electric crew to shut off any live wires. Streets folks could cut up tree limbs and place barricades and call DPNL regularly to prod them into action. And then more incoming phone calls, increasing citizen concern. And those were handled by the manager's office, Ruth Ann, dispatch, Ken Rita, also the women in the utilities office got a honk load of calls because people weren't certain why their utilities were out. So, through this continuous downpour, these employees kept at their jobs. They were working to respond to citizens, maintain traffic safety and restore power. Then at the tail end of that day, a village employee was injured in a car accident and again, out went the PD, the streets crew, the manager to work the scene and provide support. So, lunch didn't happen, breaks didn't happen, angry folks were listened to and respectfully responded to. Worried citizens were reassured. All this went on around me like standing in the eye of a refocused hurricane. I was and I am very proud of village staff for their obvious dedication and concern and it sort of puts how much I loathe doing minutes into perspective.
Thank you, Judy. We all need that reminder and thanks. It was, that was one heck of a day, but every day can be, have its challenges. So, thank you. Future agenda items, so July 17th, we've removed the lodging tax follow-up discussion. So, will we have this, will we have these two from Planning Commission?
No, there will only be the addition of the pocket neighborhood developments. The ordinance amending the definition of short-term rentals is taken out.
Okay. Do we know about the fire advisory board report? Brian, do you have any idea?
I know they're planning to do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, because Patty met with them and, you know, they've got...
Yeah, I talked to two of their members.
Okay.
They mentioned that they were coming because I'm not going to be at that meeting.
Okay. And is the HRC annual report on?
Well, I don't know. I just keep moving it right along.
Okay.
As I can down the road. So, did you need a resolution approving the grading of the land on Home...
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah. Berm, just the berm. Just, it's, Patty will know, it's, no, it's the removal of the berm from the development agreement.
Okay. I'll get that straightened away and then, do you want to put an ordinance increasing tap fees on for August 21st?
Oh, no. I mean, I think we haven't even begun to talk about it, have we?
I know staff has, had done a fair amount of work some time ago.
Well, I think I'd like to get a report from staff on recommendation before we do an ordinance.
Yeah. So, tap fee discussion maybe or something on the 21st?
Right. Because I mean, and I want to understand exactly what those equipment costs are that are half-referenced.
Are you talking about all the, I mean...
Tap fee, yeah.
Yeah. I was going to say, I'm not going to be at the next council meeting, but I wondered, so maybe the August...
Let's add it to August 21 because it doesn't look like we have that much for August 21st yet.
That would be less than enough time to...
Right.
I wondered if we wanted to review the 2017 goals since we're a little over half-year, halfway through the year, kind of...
Progress.
Yeah, progress, refocus, prioritize.
So, August 20, August 21?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest.
Yep.
And then we have the lodging tax ordinance...
Oh, and that will be coming, or the discussions, yeah.
On the 21st of August and the second reading will be on the 5th of September.
And Mary Ann's asking that staff do a written report on that. I mean, I know we've got Chris's information.
What I would like to know from staff is what kind, if any, regulations they think need to be in place for the alternative lodging facilities, which would include short-term rental apartments as well as bedrooms in people's houses? And a sense of the kind of work that would be involved for staff regarding that?
What I would, I would suggest, because we've got a number of pieces of paper, separate pieces of paper that are kind of summarizing that issue, is that if staff would write a single staff report summarizing it and that would include what you found out, would include some of the, summarizing Chris, I mean, Chris's legal opinion stands on its own, but maybe summarizing the legal opinion, what you may find out from Green County, basically putting everything, the uses of the money, basically putting everything that's been generated into one report rather than having a bunch of disparate pieces of paper.
What's our timing on that?
That will be for the 21st, August 21st.
Because that's when the draft ordinance is coming?
Yeah, that kind of thing, but short-term, not long-term.
At this point, it doesn't look like, other than that, that, well, we've got, so for September 5th, we have 20, no, we don't. We don't have anything else except the second reading of the lodging tax for September 5th.
That's what we talked about.
And then, basically, the rest of, the rest of the agenda is budget schedule, which that will obviously start filling in as we move along. Council, are we, are we going to entertain a motion to return to our executive session?
Yes, I move that we, that after this meeting is complete, we return to our executive session. Do we have to exit this?
For the purpose of pending your imminent court action. Okay. Was there a second?
Yes.
Jerry?
Thank you. I want your...
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Queen?
Yes.
Affleck?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dorothy.